Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 3480, South Carolina Code, 1987, as amended, all the media in the immediate area has been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. At this time, I will ask for an approval of the agenda. Well, let's back up before, well, go ahead. Second, it's been properly moved in the second that we approve the agenda. At this time, I would ask that, first of all, we have a prayer by Mr. Audrey Gore, and then a pledge allegiance to be led by Ms. Warren Jeffries.
That is all bow, yes. As blessing for Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, for being with us. We thank you for blessing the Darlington County School District. Father, we thank you for our parents, our community, our schools, principals, teachers, and support staff, and most of all, we thank you for our superintendent. Lord, grant us wisdom that we work together, that we make sound decisions that will help our children continue to thrive. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any citizens comments? Anyone signed up? Okay. At this time, we will have the recognition of presentation awards.
Yeah, I've heard the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not in here, must be. Okay. At this time, I will ask for the approval of the minutes from September 8th and September 22nd, uh, meetings.
I move that we approve. A second.
It's been properly moved that we accept that the minutes of the September 8th and 22nd board meetings be approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, we will now go to our next board meeting will be an education work session, which will be held on October the 13th. I'm sorry. Wrong one. Can't say that. Okay, okay. It'll be October 27th at 6 o'clock in the boardroom here at the district office. At this time, I will ask for the approval of the adult education admissions.
A second.
Second.
It's properly moved in the second that we accept the adult education admissions. All those in favor? Opposees? Ayes have it. At this time, we will recognize have the honors, awards, and recognitions. First, we will start with the perfect scores on the 2024-25 S.C. Ready Assessment.
The board, Dr. Nichols apologizes she's unable to be with us tonight, but we'll make this recommendation on her behalf. These student recognitions. The South Carolina College and Career Readiness Assessment Program is a statewide assessment in English, Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies administered to students in grades three through eight as required by the Education Accountability Act. Eleven students in the Darlington County School District earned a perfect score on one or more sections of the test, as determined by the South Carolina Department of Education. To earn the perfect score, students must score the maximum raw score for the sections of the test. The following students earned a perfect score on one or more portions of the test. Do it by school?
Yeah.
So, and I'll call your name if you come up, or a photograph. We'll start with St. John's Elementary, former St. John's Elementary, Ryder Wagner with Marco Cerialis. Congratulations.
Thank you.
From North Hartsfield Elementary, Emma Williams and Billy Freeman, Principal Carla Walker. From J.L. Kane Elementary School, Jalani Vanderhorst, Principal Dr. Stephanie. We have three from Hartsfield Middle School, Alan Zhang, Maria Clara Barbosa, and Carlos Acosta, Principal Dr. Katrina James. And three from Darlington Middle School, Benjamin Personette, Kavion Moses, and Jacob English, Principal Victoria Cooper.
Reports and admissions administration presentation. Budget, I'm sorry, budget report, go ahead.
Um, the budget report that you have in front of you is for August. Nothing exciting about it. We're pretty much in the same place this August as we were last August. Our revenues don't really start coming in until the first of the year. Did anybody have any questions about the budget reports? Our audit, our audit for the previous year is underway and in progress, and I spoke with the auditors right before came in here, so they are doing test work and everything's on schedule, so. Short sweep this time.
Not at all.
Y'all don't have any questions? I don't. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for making it simple, so. All your hard work makes it appear very simple.
Now, we will move on to the adoption of the policies for first or second reading.
If parents want to go home.
If any parents of the young folks would like to leave, you all may do so. We'll take a break for a second to allow you all to leave. Unless an objection, I will entertain a motion, the approval of the policy BE and policy GCLE for second reading, second reading.
So move.
Second. It probably moves a second that policy BE and policy GCLE be approved for second readings. All those in favor? Aye. Opposees? Ayes have it. At this time, I will also entertain a motion for policies GCB, policy JH, CFC, GCC, Secret League Bank, be approved for first reading. So move.
Second.
It probably moves a second that be approved of four for first reading. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposees? Ayes have it. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Ferguson for his superintendent update.
Good afternoon, everybody. I want to start by recognizing those students who came up here. That perfect score on the S.C. Ready is no small task, and those 11 students really speak to the excellence that I think we want for all of the children in Darlington County. So, I want to give a big shout out to them once again. And as y'all see on the board, I think y'all are probably tired of hearing me say it by now, but we are one team with one dream, excellence in education, each child every day, and those children exemplify what we want for all of the children in Darlington County. And kind of around that, we wanted to start tonight with a video, hearing from the voices of kids in Darlington County. And what this video does is Chris went around and asked a lot of children, what do you want to be when you grow up? What do you hope for? What are your dreams? And in this two minutes, we capture the voices of so many children in Darlington County. I want to share that first with y'all tonight, and then after tonight, we will push it out on our social media tomorrow. So, here are some voices of Darlington County children.
My hopes and dreams are to become an astronomer.
I want to be a free golfer.
I want to be a doctor.
I want to be a firefighter.
I want to be a teacher.
I want to pursue welding as a career. Getting my ASVAB scores back next week, and I'm going to go right to a recruiter. I'm going to see about going to the Air National Guard.
I want to be a nurse when I grow up.
I want to be a father.
I want to help out at an animal shelter.
Right now, I just mostly want to become a scientist.
I want to be a lawyer.
I, like, really dream to become a chef.
I want to be like a doctor.
I want to be a police officer.
I want to be rich.
I'm planning on going to college and getting a computer science degree.
Be either a photographer or cosmetologist and go to college and have a great education.
To race dirt bikes.
To go to Clemson and to play football.
Professional golfer.
My dream is to be a competitive skater.
I want to be a doctor.
My dream is to eventually become a writer.
I want to be a vet.
To become an industrial designer.
When I grow up, I want to be an orthodontist.
I just want to minister to people.
I want to become a lawyer, and I want to have my bachelor's degree.
I want to own a reptile sanctuary.
To become a nurse and to give back to everyone who helped me get to where I am right now.
To make my mom proud.
To become a professional soccer player.
To make it to the MLB.
To become a race car driver.
I'd like to go to tech and further my welding certification, and then go into the welding field.
To be a hairstylist.
To be a real estate agent.
Graduate college and then become a marine biologist.
I want to be a spider.
Superman.
A teacher.
I want to be successful in life.
My dream is to become an architect.
Go to college and become a dentist.
I want to be an interior designer.
Tow truck driver, just like my dad.
I want to be famous.
I want to be an OB-GYN.
To become an animator.
I want to be an author when I grow up.
Become a welder, because my dad does it.
To be a physical therapist.
I want to be an art teacher, so that's my dream.
I want to be a police officer.
I want to be a scientist.
I want to become an architectologist.
Some dream to be a doctor and help people out, like, I want to be a tutor, and I want to be a community leader.
So, there are so many dreams in Darlington County from so many kids, and I think you'll notice the variety there, too. Some want to be industrial engineers. I don't know what that is, if I'm being honest. I had to go look that up. Lawyers, doctors, teachers, community leaders, ministers, the, the potential within our schools is so great, and our job is not easy, but it is to prepare each one of those children to be prepared for their full potential, no matter where that takes them, into college, career, or the military. And one of the things that, this will change for me, there we go. I, I want to take a few minutes and, and brag on our schools, because one thing that I send each of you each week in my weekly update is the Glimpse Newsletter, that Audrey spends time preparing every week, and it's snapshots of what's going on in our schools. And there is so much good happening in our schools. And, you know, at the top, you'll see a young middle school student who got to visit A.O. Smith to learn about advanced manufacturing as a middle school student. You see in that bottom left-hand corner, a teacher who is doing small group instruction, and I've got to give a shout out to Ms. Dory DeWitt. Ms. Dory DeWitt moves kids every single year for as long as I've been in the district, and she is laying a strong foundation in literacy and math in our youngest learners and preparing them by laying that strong foundation. We've got in the far right-hand corner, a group of, I think, first graders who invited into their schools, community helpers. So, we are learning about what it means to be a community helper and having industry come in, but also in instilling, and then what it means to, to build up our own communities where we live. The bottom, I have to say, too, if y'all have not been to an athletic event this year, I really encourage you to get out and do that. I have made it a goal to try to go to every home football game this year, and a couple weeks ago, that meant I went to Hartsfield, Darlington, and Lamar in one night, and so I watched about five minutes of each game, but, one, our fields are beautiful, so if you have not been out, I, I had some friends come in from out of town this week who graduated from Hartsfield High when I did, a long, long time ago, and they had not seen the new stadium and talked about how there are small colleges that do not have fields as nice as what we have in Darlington County. But, the, the more important piece, I think, is to see the sense of community that we have at each one of our schools, and they show up for our kids on a Friday night. So, if you have not experienced that lately, I invite you out. We will be at Darlington High this Friday night, Hartsfield versus Darlington. I will not tell you who I'm pulling for, I'm going to be on both sides of the field at some point. Friday is also my anniversary, and I told my wife we were going to the football game on our date night. She's not too thrilled about that, but I'll feed her good before we get there. The, the middle picture that I also wanted to share with you is of a Hartsfield High School graduate, Brandon Harrison, who's now serving in our military, and Brandon was recognized with three other of the, the folks he is serving with in Hawaii, because there was a car accident, and he and his fellow Army platoon saw this accident and jumped in and helped the accident, and the Army recognized them for their heroic service in that event. And I think it's just one of those stark reminders, we don't know where our kids always go when they leave us, but we are not only laying that strong academic foundation, we are also building character, and Brandon was a great example of how we're growing kids into what they, they will become, and that's not just books and learning. So, I wanted to bring that out. And then, Principals Appreciation Month is in October, and so, that picture on the far right is not all of our principals, it was some of the principals who, who stood up and took a photo with us this past month when we had Dr. Muhammad here. So, I get the opportunity to work with some of the, the best in the business who are in our schools leading every day, and they have the, the second hardest job. I think that teachers have the hardest job, but the second hardest job in the district is being a principal in the building and leading those schools and keeping us focused on the main thing. And we have some of the best in the business, and so, this appreciation month for principals, I wanted to publicly say thank you to the principals who serve in Darlington County, many of whom are in the room to, tonight. So, thank y'all very much for the hard work that y'all do every day to keep us focused on what really matters, and that is the outcomes for kids. Some other updates that I just wanted to make you aware of is, we recently celebrated the end of first quarter. It is hard to believe, but we are a quarter way through the year, and so, we wrapped up the first quarter with our first attendance celebrations on the 45th day. Every school in the district did something different to celebrate kids being present every day, because presence is power, and they acknowledged those kids. I, we're still running the numbers, but it looks like over 96% of kids were present on the 45th day of school, which is pretty good considering it was the Friday before fall break, and, and kids and teachers were getting ready to go on to an extended holiday. Got to visit several of those celebrations, and we're going to be bringing you photos and videos from those events, but especially since Dr. James is here, I wanted to give a special shout out to Hartsfield Middle School, who during their celebration took a moment to recognize the teachers who were present every instructional day during that first quarter, because it's not only the kids who need to be there, our teachers also need to be there. And so, I, I wanted to shout out Hartsfield Middle School who recognized those teachers who were there every day of the first quarter, because presence, again, is power. We are back from fall break, and as our teams returned today, they were recharged and ready to keep building on the strong start that we had. I was talking to some district staff today, and they were in classrooms observing strong instruction today, and we had a bit of a discussion about, was it fair to show up the Monday after a fall break and check for instruction? And we decided it absolutely was, because if every day counts, every day counts, including the Monday after a long break, because we know that children are guaranteed 180 days of instruction, and I am pleased to report to this board that people were teaching and kids were learning the Monday after a long break today, and many of the district office staff who were in classrooms remarked at how good the instruction they saw today was. Also, we had a longer presentation planned for today on our success around the release of the school report cards. I can't share any of that data with you yet. It is delayed. They're likely to release them the beginning of November. There are some data points, particularly at high school, around work-based learning and CTE completers, and that data is still a little messy across the state. It's, it's really small numbers. It really would not probably move anything in Darlington County, but there's still a concentration of those kids in some schools across the state, and so, the, the department has delayed the release of those results, but we will bring those to you in November, and we have several banners that we have purchased, and we were ready to go with tonight to celebrate the, the hard work that is going on in Darlington County. So, stay tuned, we will do that in November, and, and recognize those principals that have really moved the needle in schools across the county. And then, before I close, I just want to take a moment to again say thank you to our principals and our teachers for their leadership, to our families and community partners for their support, and to this board for your belief in what's possible for every child in Darlington County. As our students reminded us tonight, their dreams are big, and it's our responsibility to make sure they have a strong foundation upon which to build to reach them. It's not an easy task, but it's the right work, because we are one team with one dream, each child, every day. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I would just say. I love the videos. I mean, definitely keep that, keep, I know you'll keep doing it, it's great, I love it. I've shared it some on my, I mean, are we seeing, can you tell, like, metrics-wise, if it's like getting shared out there?
Audrey, I know watches that. I, I, the last time I saw our attendance video, it had over 1,000 views. I don't know the exact number, but we can bring those to you, too, but we are watching the metrics for the views and the clicks.
Yep.
And we're looking at growing that this one, so.
Okay, so at this point, we will now go to board input, and I will start with Valencia.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. I just want to say, in honor of Principals Appreciation Month, I just want to say that I personally appreciate you all and all of the hard work that you do, sending kudos out to you, and also share my dream, like the little fellows up there who said he wanted to be rich. That stuck with me. Thanks for all of your hard work.
Yeah, I can't, I just echo the same thing. I mean, I appreciate all of you, I appreciate all that you do. I appreciate you, Dr. Ferguson, I, you're purposeful with your words, and I appreciate the inspiration you're working to instill and the, you know, that feeling. I feel like, um, like you said, a lot of what we do, education, especially in the public schools, is not appreciated the way it should. Lots of folks don't feel that every day. They get a lot of pushback from, from people, and I just think it's important, and I appreciate you for, for leading, for your leadership, and, and leading in that way, and I hope it makes a difference, and I'm, I'm here to support you. So, thank you.
Ditto on our principals, thank you for all you do. I mean, it's a tough job, no doubt, and our teachers also, I mean, it's a team effort, like it says up there. One person can't do it, takes all of us as a team to make it happen. One person can't do it, takes all of us as a team to make it happen. And I feel good we're headed right now. I think we're headed in the right direction. And how about our vacancies? Zero?
That's absolutely amazing. You're doing a great job. We appreciate it. Thank you so much. Okay?
I don't think I've attended any meeting so far this year where we haven't discussed how much attendance impacts our test scores and how we can improve as a district. And I've been watching social media and seeing all of the innovative ways that schools have been addressing attendance. Was particularly moved by the fact that, I think it was North Hartsfield, where if every student was in a class on a Friday, that they got an award. Is that right? And, I mean, that whole issue of peer pressure to be there, I think, is huge. So I just wanna commend everybody for the way that you've all gone after securing attendance, because it's really important. Thank you.
I would just like to say that I'm honored to be with such professional people at this time. Y'all make me so proud to sit on this board. I mean, you all have done such tremendous work, and I'm proud of the teachers, I'm proud of the principals, I'm proud of the academic achievements the children have, a perfect score. I'm just happy right now. I really wanna cry, but I'm trying not to. Because you all have done such tremendous work, and I have seen the growth. I've seen the growth. I've seen the changes, and it seems like we are all headed in the same direction. And it's good to sit at a meeting when the finances are good. We're on target for our budget, and we're on target for our audit. And we're on target for doing a lot of great things for each child. And Ms. Chiles of your department with the children, heartwarming, heart-touching, beautiful. To see all those children saying what they really wanna be in life, you know? One day I was saying that, too. I probably was saying, "I wanna be rich." I thought they were saying the same thing. But I'm just so happy tonight, and God bless you all for what you all do. Thank you for each day y'all come out here and make a difference in a child's life. Thank you all. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for showing leadership and putting the children first. And I just thank you all so very much for what all of you all do. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank all of you. First of all, I also would like to congratulate and recognize our principals for the hard work that you put in every day to be sure that we get the results that we get, because without you, there would be no us. I also would like to remind the board members to look in your package this afternoon, this evening. You have a Boardmanship Institute Training Report. It will give you a detailed outline of where you have, the services that you have attended, and where you are in terms of your boardmanship. Also, would like to congratulate the young folks for their readiness scores and the hard work that they put in. Because I know that peer pressure is real great. It's real. And when our children do well, it's because you have, along with their parents, instilled in them and continue to push them. With that, I will ask at this point for a motion to deal with the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions.
Probably move to second, that we approve the personnel actions. All those in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I will ask for a motion to go into Executive Session.
I'll move that we enter Executive Session for discussion of personnel matters and contractual matters.
Probably move to second, that we go into Executive Session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Go into Executive Session. Thank you.[908.44] Thank you. Asked for a motion to come out of executive session, there were no, nothing that needs to be voted on that was dealt within the executive session. I would make a motion to come out, I would ask to come out of the executive session.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll now enter the moment for adjournment.
I can make my adjournment.
Probably move the second to adjourn.